Good evening, everyone. It is January 24th, 2022, 6:30 PM. This is the Lakeville Select Board and often acting as the Wage and Personnel Board meeting. In accordance, oh, I always forget, I'm sorry. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording this meeting? I don't see anything. Okay. "In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the January 24th, 2022 public meeting of the Lakeville Select Board will be held remotely. To view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam and you do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv." So first, we have the Select Board announcements. There's a few things in here. First off, as we all know, Betty White passed away on January, I mean, December 31st, just shy of her 100th birthday. And because she was an animal lover, we were the beneficiary of folks making donations to our animal shelter. So we received over $2,900 just from that fundraising alone. But also, we felt it was important to let folks know that the Lakeville Animal Shelter in 2021 received donations of $12,099.97. So I thought that was noteworthy. Everyone loves the work that Dave Freitz does over there. And it's nice knowing that our animals have a place where they're taken good care of and rehomed when needed. So thank you to everybody for all the donations throughout the year and for remembering Betty White with a donation to our own animal shelter. Real estate and personal property taxes are due on February 1st, 2022. Payments can be dropped off in the silver payment box in front of Town Hall or made online through the town's website. The Council on Aging will be holding a blood drive for the American Red Cross on Monday, January 31st, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM. For information on making an appointment, please visit the town's website homepage under "Community Events." And I don't know if anyone has heard on the news, but there is a major blood shortage, blood products also. So if you can donate blood, please, please do reach out to the Council on Aging. Again, you can find all the information under the "Community Events" portion of the website. Our town clerk, Lillian Drain, would like to remind residents that may be interested in running for a position in the annual election, which is in April, that nomination papers are available. That started January 10th, and you can get them through February 10th at 5:00. The papers need to be returned by Monday, February 14th. Withdraw, if you're going to withdraw your name. It has to be done by Wednesday, March 2nd. All those are at 5:00 PM. And the last day to register to vote in our annual election is Tuesday, March 15th at 8:00 PM. The following positions or offices are up for election. Town Moderator, one year. Park Commission for a two-year, unexpired term. There is a one Planning Board member for a five-year term. The following are three-year terms each. So one Select Board member, one Board of Assessors, one Board of Health Member, one Cemetery Commissioner, two Finance Committee Members, two Park Commissioners, one Library Trustee, and the Town Clerk. Also, we are looking for Free Town Lakeville Regional School District Committee members, Lakeville for a one-three-year term and Free Town for a one-three-year term. As you can see, there's plenty of positions. If anything is interesting to you, you can check on the website, call the Town Clerk's office. But if you'd like to get papers, the Town Clerk is asking that you please call ahead at 508-946-8800 to make an appointment to request nomination papers between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 AM until noon on Fridays. That's all I have. Do you have anything?
No, I haven't got anything, Madam Chair.
All right, Maureen? Anything?
No, I'm glad I don't have anything. Thank you for covering those.
Okay. So we will ask Town Administrator Ari Sky to give us any announcements that he may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For some COVID, the incidence of COVID in town continues to be elevated. We encourage residents to watch out for their community by wearing masks, practicing social distancing, getting tested when they feel at risk. The town has testing services available by appointment on Mondays and Wednesdays. We were informed late last week that Plymouth County will be providing towns and cities with at-home antigen test kits. There's rather large shipment coming our way this week. Meeting with staff tomorrow to put together a utilization plan and bring it to you for consideration. The Department Heads met last week to begin work on our organizational value statement. This process will identify those values that make our organization a community and underscore the characteristics that we're looking for in terms of new hires and ongoing performance. This process will take place over several meetings based weeks apart. And the draft statement will, of course, be presented to the Select Board for consideration. That's all I have at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right. I get caught up here with my agenda. So tonight with us, we have Mark Resnick, who is our Town Planner. And there's, I'm happy to say I have someone helping me out with these MBTA meetings. So we have, because we are an MBTA community, there is some new information coming from that. So Ari and I asked Mark if he could give us an update. It was a jam-packed meeting that day. So I'm sure you can, I did see part of your summary that you gave to the Planning Board. So I was just hoping that you could give us a little bit of information, too.
Okay, thank you. So in 2020, the legislature passed an act authorizing or requiring that communities, MBTA communities, whether you're a commuter rail or a T-community, pass high-density residential zoning districts within half a mile of their commuter or train stations, bus stations, to create high-density residential housing. In order to encourage communities to do that, if you are a non-compliant community, you will be ineligible for a variety of state grants in the future. So it's to communities' benefit to try and comply as best as possible to these requirements. The requirements basically say that within a half a mile of the train station, the community must provide 50 acres that can be rezoned for a minimum of 15 units per acre for a total of number based on the size of your community. And in Lakeville's case, the number of units is 750 units. So we have to take and look at the area within half a mile of the train station and how can we rezone that to create the opportunity? We don't have to build the units or try and find developers to do that. We just have to create, as of right, zoning that would allow, at some point in the future, whether our property is vacant or currently occupied, that perhaps it might get redeveloped into some form of high-density zoning. And it doesn't even have to necessarily be developed to that number, but the opportunity to develop it to that number has to exist. So there's a variety of other things, or flexibility, that's been built into this so that you can still maintain your underlying zoning district. So in our case, within half a mile, much of the land is own business. So we can still maintain that underlying zoning district. So if a business chooses to locate there, they can locate in that area if it's to their advantage. But so we can create this as an overlay district. So we don't change the underlying zoning, but we create this overlay district. We could also build into the overlay district that you can have mixed uses so that you could have a mixed-use district. Or if you wanted to create, because it's so close to the train station, a more pedestrian-oriented development with some shops on the first floor. You can design and write your overlay district to really kind of craft it any way you'd like. So that is the actual requirements by the state. Then there is some timelines for compliance. So what we have is by July 1st, 2023, we have to put in, have approved a timeline and action plan that must be approved by DHCD. And we must adopt that new zoning and have it approved by December 31st, 2024. They have initially indicated that there will be grant opportunities to communities in order to either create the timeline and action plan or create, craft the zoning that's necessary. However, they don't have any guidance. They haven't officially indicated how much funds, which types of communities would be eligible for it, if you have a planner, if you don't, if you're a city versus a town. So those are things that, over the coming months, they will be ironing out and, you know, and releasing more information, probably holding other webinars to inform communities. So this recently released guidance document, you know, was just came out last month.
Yeah, okay. So I really felt it was important to get this on an agenda and present it even at this really early stage because oftentimes, people don't realize that, you know, some of this stuff is occurring until the actual building is starting, when they see something different going on. But this is the perfect example of attending town meeting where if we have to make a zoning change or, you know, something, and that's, you can get a ton of information. And, you know, so my hope is that, you know, folks will keep track of this. That way, it won't be a surprise to them if two, three years down the road, four years down the road, you know, after we've already created the area that they're surprised by, you know, dense housing going in there. So I just want to let folks know that, you know, this is not our decision here in Lakeville. This is a decision from the state, so we sort of have to follow. I did have one person email me and just the question that person had was, "If we're going to get credit for the housing we already have there?" And that's the only question that I received.
So the answer is that, in a way, we can. We can include areas that have housing in there currently. So if there's some single-family homes that are in the area, we can include that as well. A developer might buy two or three of the homes and assemble, the value might be such that they can assemble a bigger piece and build some multifamily housing. We can also include existing multifamily housing that might be within that area. Again, theoretically, it could be redeveloped if it's older or if it's a much lower density. So they do allow for that. The state will review your plan to make sure that you're creating opportunity for new housing. So if you happen to have all this brand-new, high-density housing and you just draw your 50 acres over that, you're not going to be able to create anything. They may not approve it.
Yep.
Right, so, but they have sort of indicated in this guidance document, you can include some existing residentially zoned or developed areas.
Okay. So unless, I don't know if the other selectmen or Ari, if you have any questions or even any of our other guests here, but I just, you know, wanted to make sure we bring it to light. This is sort of the early stages of this planning work. And, you know, just, you can follow Planning Board. I'm sure we'll have, you know, information on this going forward. And we will, too, when appropriate. So just trying to keep people informed. Anyone have any? Yep.
I will say that Mark has also been looking into the Safe Harbor concept and what that looks like and whether we would qualify or not. He had some initial findings that weren't entirely positive. I don't know, Mark, if you want to pass that along as well.
Okay, so the Safe Harbors is a program that allows you to deny Chapter 40B applications once they're submitted. It really doesn't have anything directly to do with the MBTA community program, but the question had arisen. So I did look into it and discuss it with the zoning board because the zoning board's the board that reviews 40Bs. So we have not approved any 40Bs of 40Rs in the last two years. And those, in order to become a, quote, "safe harbor" or if I'll to be what's called a certified community that allows you to deny those, you have to submit within 12 months of an approval. And then it's good for two years from the date of the approval of that particular project. And you have to have approved a certain number of units as well. So we wouldn't be eligible to file because we don't have a current project. But it's something that if we do get another project of a certain number of units that we should remember to file because it doesn't mean you have to say no and deny an application, but it gives the board an opportunity to say no.
I just thought it was worth raising, given the overlaps, though.
Yeah, yep, no, I appreciate it. Anybody else? Rich, Maureen?
Well, I just have a quick question, if I can, Madam Chair, through you. Mark, and when you did your research based on what our current zoning looks like, smartly overlay district, I think, mixed use, how different is that compared to what they're requesting for a change?
Well, I'm not that familiar with our current zoning district, that smart growth overlay district we have. I'm not sure what the density is. But again, it could be something that we incorporate as, extend the overlay district. It doesn't mean we have to create something new. We can revise the language of it and expand the area. Again, that's something that, as we move forward with this, we'll kind of evaluate whether that's an option with DHCD, whether they want it as a separate district, which they probably will because this needs to be by right, not a special permit-type situation. So we would have to revise something, either create a new district or revise an existing district.
And just one more question, because I know the train station is going to be shifting over to Middleborough. Has there been any, I'm trying to recall if there's been any discussion that that would change our designation as a commuter?
Well, yeah, the way the state does it is if the train station is within a half a mile of the abutting community, then the abutting community is a commuter rail community. So even though it's moving, it's only moving just over the border, so.
Right, okay, so we would still be a district, okay.
That's great.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Rich, anything?
No, I'm all set right now. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, the highly anticipated presentation of the FY23 budget. I'll leave that up to you, Town Administrator.
Thank you. I'm going to share a screen here, so hold on. Hopefully, everybody can see this. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yep.
Okay, great. So this is a little bit different than the town has seen in the past, process-wise. And my objective was to, really threefold. One, well, my objective was to do everything I could to comply with the bylaws as they're written. And the bylaws require the budget to be presented by the end of January, so we're doing that. It also requires the Town Administrator to assemble, prepare, and present the annual operating and capital budgets, so we're doing that. And to be responsible for the development of the CIP, and we're doing that as well. So I'm sorry, Rich, did you say something?
No, I didn't, no.
Okay, sorry, yeah. So, and feel free to ask questions as we go along here. Okay, so the, I'm going to give you a kind of an overview of what we're looking at. This is the budget, the process that we went through, some of the considerations we had, highlights of what's in there, and then talk a little bit about the calendar, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions after that.
Can I just jump in real quickly? Technically, the Finance Committee isn't posted as a meeting, so there's no reason there for you guys to open and close your meeting, which means you can't deliberate. But we, this is the first budget. I figured we'd have you guys on just in case you had any individual questions. So we don't have to open your meeting or close your meeting or anything. But I just really wanted you to have an opportunity to ask a question if you had one at this early stage.
Okay, that's noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari.
So before I dive into it, I just want to acknowledge the work of the Department Heads. We really put together a, put really thoughtful, a lot of thought into their proposals and requests. Worked collaboratively to come up with the proposals that worked and met the constraints that we had in terms of resources. I'm also particularly thankful to Todd Hassett for his work on helping assemble this in the countryside, as well as Christina Cottzeridis, who did a lot of the management analysis work and developed a lot of the management pages you saw and assembled the budget and got it to reality and coordinated the process, too. So talking about the current environment, you know, our regional and national economic data are generally favorable, although, you know, I wrote this before today, stock market performance, but, you know, there's some uncertainty out there in the world. Inflation has begun to have an impact on operational and capital costs. The pandemic has made forecasting very problematic. We just don't know what's coming next. So the proposed budget is structured in a conservative way to address core needs while ensuring sustainability. Quick sense of economic overview. The pandemic continues to have an impact on the community's well-being. Truer words have never been spoken. We've had 1,984 cases since 2020 in Lakeville. That was as of a week or two ago. It's probably higher now. 1,699 deaths in Plymouth County. We've done, taken a number of actions in the town government to ensure the health of the community. We've limited in-person meetings, requiring masks in public buildings, sponsored vaccination and testing clinics. Despite these headwinds, we've maintained a pattern of sustained and strong growth. FY22 new growth was over $600,000. Town recorded 716 building permits in 2021. Both of those numbers are the largest in recent memory. Unemployment 2021 was, as of November, was 4.5%. And the median residential sales prices were up about almost 10% over 2020. State finances appear to be generally positive. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue projects that FY23 revenue will be 20% above the 2022 baseline that they used to construct the budget last year. However, economic headwinds resulting from supply chain disruption and inflation could temper future growth and make projections a little less certain. Our primary objectives in the budget process were to ensure that the proposed budget and capital plan met our statutory obligations, as I mentioned earlier. We also wanted to make sure that stakeholders, whoever they may be, were provided with sufficient opportunity to address areas of concern. We had three core principles. One was sustainability, which is the ability to support the recommendations over the long term, proactivity, trying to move the organization past a reactive stance to address issues as they occur and have that capability, and competitiveness. We have a number of steps, concrete steps, in the budget to ensure the town remains a workplace of choice. The budget document has been structured to provide additional background and transparency regarding municipal operations as well. This is a first step in a very long process that we're going to go through. This year's budget has objectives and department descriptions and org charts and things like that to give a better sense of context. In the long term, we're looking at various management tools as well to help bring the organization forward. In terms of revenue, as I said, we took a conservative approach. The property tax levy, as we have, is set at 2.5% plus an estimate of $450,000 for new growth, which is only 2/3 of the FY22 number. Local receipts are estimated at $3,983,500. The FY21 actual was 4.5 million. So that's usually a DOR, is always looking to make sure you don't overestimate. State aid is estimated at $1,682,942, which is about $42,000 more than FY22. Park Enterprise Fund of Revenue is estimated at $194,220, which is a little bit below the FY22 budget of $197,575. Landfill Enterprise Fund revenue is estimated at $409,524, which is a little bit above FY22, but the fund's been doing quite well. And sustainability is our core principle. In terms of the approach for the operating budget and the investments that we make, we really view it as an investment plan for the organization. As I mentioned before, we're using conservative estimates for state aid and local receipts. Incorporates organizational decisions that were made during FY22. We established a dedicated planning budget, which moves the planner out of the Select Board's budget into its own budget. We add part-time support to inspectional services to allow for the transfer of the full-time clerk to planning. We have the full cost of firefighter positions, which are previously funded by CARES. The proposed budget also includes several additions. We included contractual services to support OPM activities. As you recall, the OPM program was something that we began this year, as well as money for facilities maintenance. We have general fund support for a Council on Aging outreach position. That's pending grant confirmation. It's possible we'll get grant confirmation during the budget process and be able to remove that general fund support. We increased the part-time DPW labor position to full-time, support outdoor maintenance activities. We added a police officer to focus on traffic enforcement. And we add overtime funding to reflect historical averages. This temporary funding for the Town Clerk to support early voting and election staffing, funding in human resources for a classification and compensation study, and placeholder increases for the school districts and additional funding for snow removal. We still have a little ways to go in the school districts. We're waiting to get numbers from them. I am told that we'll have numbers during the course of February. Overall, it's really intended to bring the budget towards a more proactive stance through some fairly, pretty targeted and modest investments into the organization. A little more about classification and compensation. We have money for compensation increases for union and non-union employees as follow the guidelines that we discussed during our December briefing. We have funding to implement changes to the town's health insurance program as we have previously discussed, changing the cost share, as well as a new potential offering of a new plan as well. High, difficult plan. And there's funding for a classification and compensation study, which will focus on the following. We'll assess comparable municipalities and look We'll assess comparable municipalities and look at their compensation and benefits to determine our competitiveness. Evaluation of non-union job titles and descriptions, developing recommendations regarding pay ranges and step structures, which we don't currently have. And review of town practices and policies, including the hiring process, you know, increases, management of the personnel regime overall, road, role of the wage and personnel board, and so on. The, this is all intended together to compete with, to, to brighten us with concrete measures that allows us to compete with other employers, make the town a workplace of choice and able to respond more nimbly to the, to the hiring environment. There are, as you recall, we had a fairly, a pretty good free cash certification for FY twenty two is to almost two and a half million dollars. That is a high number for town our size. Nine hundred and sixty thousand that we designated into the capital plan. These are all for one-time uses, of course. Seven hundred thousand to stabilization, which will bring the town into compliance with its stabilization policy. It's not currently in compliance and hasn't been for a few years. Three hundred and ten thousand to the OPEB trust fund, which is, which matches our, in our required contribution. Four forty-three undesigned literally means that it hasn't been designated for anything. That's just spare cash that we're leaving aside in case we need it. And then the special town meeting in November, those $4,362 that were, that were, that were appropriated during that process. Give a sense of the capital plan. It's a five-year plan runs from FY twenty three to twenty seven. The funding consists of a combination of borrowing, free cash, retained earnings, capital stabilization and overlay surplus. The largest project is a placeholder for the design and construction of replacing for the town hall and fire station. As you, as I recall, there was, there's a feasibility study just, just starting to get underway. There's design money, a placeholder of 1.8 million in FY twenty three, and construction money and placeholder of 12 million in FY twenty five. Other significant projects are a new aerial ladder truck for the fire department. As you know, they'd have ongoing problems with that, with the current vehicle. It's a big investment for something that, you know, was used to somewhat modest. But we don't know there's much choice at this point, but certainly there'll be a discussion we can have during the fire overview. There's a placeholder for the DPW administration building and for improvement, parking lot improvements around there, repaving, things like that in FY twenty four. There's money for roadway improvements, almost two million over five years. Police cruisers, public works vehicles and park projects. We also have placeholder funding for, in addition to the senior center feasibility study of 40,000 in FY twenty two, and then design and construction in FY twenty three to twenty four. Here's a source of funding over the course of that. You'll see that the, 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 the year-by-year numbers. Borrowing the, the biggest chunk in FY twenty five, of course, is mostly for the new town hall. We anticipate that would be outside the levy limit. And some of the other ones would be as well, but that'd be the major one. The, we have the free cash allocations of, over the, over those years. Some retained earnings mainly from enterprise funds and some money from capital stabilization. And the, and the, some grants and capital. Also should note that this does not include funding for the school projects through the MSBA. Those will be accommodated at a later date once we have numbers for those. Here's a more breakdown for this current year of the capital plan. We have the design, the placeholder, the design placeholder for a town hall, fire station design. We would anticipate that that would not come, be needed until, would not come before a town meeting until fall at the earliest. Technology improvements, which is continues the, the commitment that the, that the board has made towards maintaining our IT footprint. Cruiser replacements for the police department, the ladder truck, a command vehicle replacement for fire, 375,000 for road improvements. Replacement of an air compressor and a front-end loader in public works. Crack seal and seal coating, parking, at the parking lot for transfer, transfer station to be funded by retained earnings. Grid money for the senior center feasibility study. Some use of free cash for John Pond Park Building and then part, and then return earnings for working on the Clear Pond Park Shed and Ted Williams Camp lighting and pump house. And also I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about COVID relief because it does intertwine in with our operations as well as our, as well as our capital plan. Initial relief, as you know, is provided through the CARES Act. Through the CARES Act is now done. The town spent over one and a half million dollars in eligible activities. 449,000 for town responders and staff and supplies and mitigation. And nearly 1.1 million for portion of support to the regional schools. The American Rescue Plan Act provides additional funding. We'll receive direct funding from two sources. Direct for the federal government, 1.2 million divided over two years, so half in twenty one, or received, and next half will be coming this year. Plymouth County has so far designated 544,000 to the town. Believe there'll be more coming, though we don't have any guarantee of that. This funding must be spent by December of 2024. Activities that we've taken to date at the last board meeting, the board allocated up to $100,000 for COVID vaccination and mitigation. That seems to be a good number for now. We'll see how long that lasts. And then they've also, boards also approved the development of a plan to advance provision of water services to town facilities and parks that feasibility study is currently in progress. Next steps. The governor's budget's coming out this week. Chef cherry sheets by the end of the week as well. And I'll be writing an update at our, during our department reviews on where things stand. Regional school budgets, I'm being told we should have them in January to February. You have your interview, your reviews with the, with the departments, February seventh, eighth and ninth. We're in the process of putting that schedule together. Late February, we'll be setting up, meeting with the capital expenditures committee to consider the FY twenty three to twenty seven capital plan. Finance committee reviews, we have designated from March 2 of 2022. Select board is scheduled to vote on the final war in April 11th, warrant review in April 25th, annual town meeting on the sixteenth of May. And of course, you know, there'll probably be numerous opportunities for discussions and updates of the budget during the, the very select board meetings between now and then as well. As news comes along, we'll, we'll certainly provide that to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair. I think you're muted.
You're right. Thank you. I don't have any questions. I, I really did appreciate the summary letter that, that you provided us. It was a really nice overview of, you know, financially how we're standing, even with all the COVID concerns we've had over the last year. So I really appreciate the time that, you know, was put into that. I think the presentation right now is, even if this is the first time you're ever watching a selectman's meet, a select board meeting, I think you're getting a lot of information. And, you know, that's one thing that I've always been about is, you know, trying to get people involved in their local town government. So just thanks to you, Christina. And, you know, the department heads, I know I've spoken to several of them and they've, as much as you can enjoy doing a budget, they've actually, you know, enjoyed the process that you've, you know, that you put together. So I appreciate your efforts, but I'll open it up first to Rich, then Lorraine, and then we can go to each of the members from the Finance Committee if they have any questions. Rich, I don't know if you want to get started?
Madam Chair, I, I think the town administrator and the staff have done a very good job putting together this budget and is very detailed in the introductory letter, like you said, is, is very thorough and very complete and explains, you know, what's going on and what's happened, what's going on and what we're doing going forward. So that's great. So I don't really have any questions on the budget, you know, right now. But Ari, while the Finance Committee is here, I want to make sure that they know that they're invited to our meeting on the February seventh, eighth and ninth, you know, with the department heads, because that'll save everybody a lot of time. You know, if their availability, you know, do that so they don't have to repeat themselves. We did that the last couple of years. So I think that makes a lot of sense if Finance Committee is okay with that. So.
Yes, speaking for the Finance Committee, I think that worked really well the last couple of years. So assuming my team can make it, I would like to do that again.
Great.
Good. Okay, Lorraine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I just wanted to say I appreciate the, the overview, Ari. It's, it's very clear and concise. So I do look forward to, you know, getting together with the department heads and finding out more about the, you know, the meat of the budget, where they're looking to go and, you know, hearing some of their, you know, their input. So I appreciate it and the work of the office too. Very much.
One thing I've learned over the past eight months is that you cannot overstate the dedication and commitment that these department heads have to this organization and getting the job done. It's, it's, their, their work has really been terrific. And, you know, we asked them to do something they hadn't done before, asked them to adapt to a process and then before this, you really meant to bring more transparency and kind of knit the budget together. And they, they were right there. Everyone just jumped right in. They, they were terrific.
I think it was that same dedication that got us through those first couple, three months of COVID too.
I believe it.
It was so scary, you know, and we, we all realized that, you know, how strong our, our leadership team is. So. Okay, Darren, I will, Mr. Chair, I will turn it over to you and you can call on your, your members if they have any questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just leave it open to any, if any of them have anything to add. I'll just, I'll just echo what everyone else has said. I think this is a really good way to start the budget process, kind of gets us thinking instead of just kind of jumping into the middle of it. So I appreciate everyone's hard work. Thank you, Ari. I look forward to getting into the details, so. I don't know if anyone else in the Finance Committee wants to add anything.
I don't have anything. Just really good job. Nice presentation. Thank you.
Yep, I'd just like to echo that too and look forward to having some discussions as we get through the rest of the process.
I think we have Adam still.
Yeah, I'd say the same. It was a well-done presentation. Still going through the numbers and everything, but I look forward to getting deeper into it as we get through this process.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, if anyone has any questions, please, you know, feel free to give me a call, Christina or myself or Todd.
Yep. So just for everyone who is, you know, asking the question, well, when do we get to see the budget? You know, as Ari indicated, some of the school numbers aren't in yet. There may be some changes according to, you know, whether we get some grant money or not. So I, I believe your intention is to sort of put up, you know, maybe something similar to the summary, but we're, you know, we will definitely try to have the budget be way before we go to town meeting, so people can study it before they get there. But, but, you know, right now it's kind of early and there's definitely going to be some changes to the early figures depending on state aid and, you know, all those kinds of things. So we don't want to present too many, you know, budgets. But I know Ari has always answered folks' questions that, you know, someone has a question or, you know, a question on the review. I don't want to load up his schedule. I'd be happy to answer them too, but, you know, we will get it posted, even if it's, you know, the, the next version. But right now, I think it's a little too early to just post the whole thing.
Yeah, so we've had, yeah, we've all had some conversations about that, and I think we'll probably post the, the overview. Yeah, and maybe the letter, perhaps. I don't know. But, but, but we'll, we'll hold off on the, the full document until we get a little further along, until we have cherry sheet numbers and, you know, budget numbers from the, from the, especially from the regional districts. That, that one's really important. So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Christina, I see you there. Thank you for all your work on this. I, I know you were working hard even all through last weekend today to get this all ready for us. So much appreciation. Thank you. Yeah. So if there's nothing else, Todd, I know Todd's on here. I don't see him, but I see his name. Same thing to you, Todd. I know that you and Ari hit it off really well right from the beginning. So much appreciation to you too for, for all your work on this and for helping Ari transition in too. So, you know, I know that was, that was great. I, he's not even going to say anything.
Thank you.
Todd's our town accountant, so he's kind of an important guy, even though he's a little camera shy right now. All right. So thank you to everyone. And again, Finance Committee, you know, if anyone has any questions, they want to reach out, you know, and then we will keep you updated. But let's definitely plan seventh, eighth and nine. We'll do the meetings with the department heads like we've done the last couple of years, which really gets into, you know, some of the specifics. So thank you to everybody.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. So moving right along here. We are on agenda item number five. So we received a resignation from Darlene Donnelly, who is one of the park commissioners. And she's resigning effectively April fourth, 2022, which is right at the election time. So we need to add her position to the ballot. Hers is the two-year unexpired. So I will entertain a motion to revise the positions to be placed on the annual election warrant to include a two-year unexpired term on the park commission.
So moved.
I'll second.
And let's have some discussion here. Do we want to have any discussion?
The only thing, Madam Chair, is that I think we should accept the resignation of Darlene Donnelly first before we vote the, the new ballot for the election. Opinion, but.
No, we can do that. So, so we do have a motion and a second on the floor, but the letter reads, I hereby resign my position on the park commission effective April fourth. It has been my pleasure to serve on the commission this past year. So I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation letter of Darlene Lee from the park commission effective April fourth.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I'd like to thank Darlene for her many, 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 many years of service to this town, whether it's a regional school community member or whatever. She's always there and we need her to help us. And she's done a terrific job. And I know she's very busy and it's very challenging for her at this moment. So with reluctance, you know.
Yeah.
And send her a letter of thanks, please.
Yeah, we will do that. Tracy's not with us tonight, but we will make sure that we get that out to Darlene. I agree. She's also very good to the community in many other ways other than, you know, just doing town stuff. So much thanks to Darlene. All those in favor?
Carboni, I?
Camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right. So now we still have the motion and the second on the floor for the adding the revising the position. Any discussion on that? Other than I'm concerned because we're going to have three spots open on the park commission, but maybe someone will step forward. All those in favor of revising the positions on the election warrant?
Carboni, I?
The camera, I.
Fabian, I. Okay. Next, we have, we have, we've been asked to appoint a member to the Free Town Lakeville Regional Superintendent Search Committee. So I'm, I'm, I know that they started doing some things for the search committee, for the superintendent search committee back in October. I believe they did, you know, but we didn't get this request until late. So that's why I know that, you know, they're already receiving resumes and everything. But so I, I, you know, I, again, on this one here is kind of tough for me. So I don't think I'm a good candidate for this. So if I may, I'm going to step down as chair and I'm going to nominate Lorraine to be on this committee because I know Lorraine, you have the experience with the school committee. You were on the local when there was still a local. I know you were also on the regional. So I think you'd actually be the best person to represent. So I think you'd actually be the best person to represent us here. Do you want a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion, Rich?
Yeah, my only discussion is, is that, you know, the town has not been asked about, you know, what our expectations are for new superintendents. So I would ask a select board member, Lorraine, to provide something of what we think, you know, we should need a new, what we, what our expectations are for new superintendents. So I know that they sent some survey out months ago on Facebook, but they never, we weren't involved in that at all. And I think it's important for us to say to them what we think a superintendent should be.
Okay. Do you want us to like come up with a couple of values or do you want?
Well, if Lorraine is going to be appointed, she should come up with some values as to what, what, what we need.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Like I said, you know, I've, I've participated on school council, but never like school committee or anything more. So I think Lorraine, you're probably better, you've worked with different superintendents to come up with something like that if you're willing.
Yeah. And if, I just think it would be good if the two of you could submit just a, you know, just a couple of bullet points of something that are important to you. You both have experience in the past working with the superintendents and, you know, I mean, you'd just be going off of what, what I think. And I think it's important that, you know, we should, we submit something as a, as a unit.
Okay. I mean, it's going to take a little bit, so we can just revisit it at the next meeting too. So, all right. So we have a motion.
That's not the case because I think the meeting
Is coming up.
Soon. I think, I think it's next week. If I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I don't know.
I don't either.
I think that's correct. I think that's correct.
Okay.
The meeting's next week, so. I think, I think Lorraine ought to ask, especially the town accountant who deals with them every single week, of what his expectations are. And I think that the town administrator who also deals with the, with the superintendent, you know, all the time. Because it's just, you know, it's very important. And, you know, their, their budget's going to be $44 million, you know, this year. It's huge.
Yeah, we have a pretty, we have a pretty good school committee, you know, coalition too, that, you know, I think that they have a pretty good pulse on, on it too. But I, I understand what, you know, we're saying that, you know, in the past, we have solicited feedback from our town representatives. So, but yeah, I mean, I can throw out the question and just bring it back. Hopefully I'll get some information as to when the next meeting is.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I guess I agree with Rich that, you know, talking to the town accountant, of course, talking to, you know, the town administrator. I would also suggest a brief conversation maybe with the two chiefs just to, we have, you know, all the inspections that go on through the fire chief, and then we have the, you know, resource officer through the police chief. So plenty of people that may have a little contribution. Okay. Does that satisfy that, Rich, for you?
Yeah, Lorraine can put something together for us.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor of appointing selectman Carboni to the superintendent search committee? Baby and I.
Camera, I.
Baby and I.
Carboni, I.
Okay. All right. And I'm sure, yeah, I, I know that you have most of their contact information, but I'm sure Ari can get you some information too on when that first meeting or second meeting is coming up. Um, okay.
Just go through the superintendent.
Yeah, yep. All right. So agenda item number seven is also for the regional school system. So the teachers' union bargaining, the collective bargaining negotiations with the teachers' union are, I believe, about to start. I don't think, I think this one's more timely. So I will step down as chair and I will nominate Ari to represent the town of Lakeville on the collective bargaining negotiations for the teachers' union for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School System.
Second that motion.
Do we have any discussion? I mean, I just think Ari is, you know, you know, works with the superintendent and for all the same reasons that, you know, I, I know he's done things like this before. And it's, a lot of the meetings are going to be during the day too, during, so I just think right now he's the best person to do that. Ari, Ari.
And if I may, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, that our representative is a, is a single vote with the representative from Free Town. And they'll be able to participate in the executive session, but not the working groups, if I'm not mistaken.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
This has to also be brought back to the board of selectmen on the final voting to be part of the contract. So Lorraine is correct. They don't participate in the, the, if you want to call them working sessions or the negotiations meetings.
That's correct.
Address the potential of an agreement. Okay. So that's the way it works.
My understanding is that it's meant to be, to give them a convenient sounding board to, to determine whether something is feasible or not.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think you're the best person to do that right now, Ari. So any other discussion on Ari as our appointment to this collective bargaining negotiation representative position? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Baby and I. All right. Number eight, agenda item number eight. So we've received two letters of resignation from members of the council on aging. One is from Mrs. Margaret Peggy Gross and the other one is from Mrs. Pat Basset. They're both, you know, spent a lot of time at the COA, doing lots of things, participating on the council. So I'll entertain a motion that we accept both of their letters of resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Once again, Madam Chair, just both Peggy Gross and Pat Basset, you know, like you say, has spent years and years and years, you know, working and volunteering, you know, and they'll continue to volunteer. As I call it, Peggy Gross, myself, and asked her if there was some issue or something. And she said, no. She said, everything is great. She said, but it's just time for me, you know, to get out of this and do something else. And she'll continue to volunteer at the, at the COA.
Yep. Okay. So all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Baby and I. So of course, what this means now is that we have two vacancies for full members and two vacancies for alternate members on the actual council. So I think that we should definitely advertise and I'm hoping that, you know, we can get some other folks interested that maybe, you know, don't have the time to commit to doing two or three meetings a month or, you know, two and three and four hour meetings sometimes, but still want to, you know, help their community. And the senior center, if you're going to help anywhere, senior center is a great place to help, even if it is, you know, just attending one meeting every month or, you know, and sometimes little extra things here and there, but it's very important. It's something that's, you know, in our bylaws and we, we really need to be there for our seniors. And, you know, we'll have Ari, we'll have Tracy advertise the, the vacancies and hopefully Kelly will get you, Kelly, Tracy, someone will get some, some good responses on that. I would look forward to, you know, appointing some, some new people. Anybody else on that? So agenda item number nine, we have the minutes of January 10th. I believe we were all present. Does anyone have any corrections or?
No, I'll just make a motion that we approve the board of selectmen, the select board meeting minutes as, as January 10th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
Baby and I. Any new business? New business, anything, anybody? Okay. Under old business, I have a couple of things. The first thing, I know that we did get, there was, it's in the packet, but we did receive something from the state, from local election districts review commission. It says at a meeting held October 27th, the local election districts review commission considered the submission redividing Lakeville into precincts. The commission is pleased to inform you that this division meets the requirements of mass general law is otherwise consistent with law and has thus been approved by the commission. Please note that the effective date of your new precincts was December 31st, 2021. We've actually received a couple of questions from folks wondering where they're going to be and if this affects you and you're going to need a, you're going to be one of those people who was on the line and you're moved around, the town clerk will be sending letters to everyone. It is, you know, she must inform folks of the change. So the town clerk will be sending out a notice to all residents who will be affected by this precinct change. And of course, when you go in for voting, if for some reason you forget, the sign will be there, the, but they're still working on it. So that's why the letters haven't been sent yet to the residences, but rest assured, if you are, if your street is affected or your house number, you will be notified by the clerk's office. But the information isn't all put together yet. So you may just want to give her a few more weeks before you ask what your new precinct is, if you think that you're a part of that change. We do have the maps and everything, but the lists are still being compiled. The only other thing I have under old business is the, I'm just trying to finish out anything we have left over from last year. And to my knowledge, this is one of the, I think the only thing that we have left was the board committee and commission handbook. I know there was discussion that I think it was selectman Carboni that wanted some descriptions put in. But I thought the last time we discussed it, we had agreed to just approve it with the select board being changed from board of selectmen, but Ari and I looked and we couldn't find any decision. So I will open the floor if someone, you know, wants to go one way or the other. This is, the book hasn't changed other than the name being changed from selectmen to select board. So if we can make a decision right now, we can finish our unfinished business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I submitted my edits and comments to Christina on Friday. And I too did go back to review some of our previous discussions on this. And when we received it from Lil the first time, and we brought it back for discussion that we were going to wait until after the town meeting to see if they voted to change from selectmen to select board. We did talk about just adding a quick, you know, description about each of the, the committees and commissions in there. And it seemed that the, you know, everybody seemed to be, you know, happy with that. So it didn't have to be overkill. It was just a, a general, this is what this committee does. This is what that does. And I know select board member, the camera had alluded to the fact that this stuff on the website, which there is, but not, not every board committee or commission has a description up there. So I just don't want to miss anything. And I'm all about one-stop shopping and making things easy for people. So if this is, you know, something to get out so that it's available for the April election, I still think that there's time to just add, you know, even if it's a, you know, copy and paste from the website. But I think that we need to include all of the boards, committees and commissions that people can be appointed for.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I, I disagree. And, you know, I disagreed at the last meeting. This says acknowledgement and receipt of appointed and elected committee's handbook. Okay, that's what this is all about. And I know the town clerk and I believe Ari and Christina spent a lot of time on that. If, if Lorraine is concerned about a description of a committee or a board, which is on the website, and maybe they're not up to date, but why should we hold up this document and update that information? If you look at the table of contents on page 30, it says sources of information. Okay? And the town clerk has listed a bunch of, you know, town bylaws and so forth and so on, the website, et cetera, et cetera. Just add another bullet. If you want to know what the description is of a board or committee, just go to the town website and click on boards and committees and commissions. Make it simple. Why do we want to add more language to this document, which doesn't even apply? Because this is after the people get appointed and elected, not before, after they get appointed.
Okay. So, okay. No, I'm.
Holding on to this for a period of time.
Okay.
And I, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, I'm not the one that's holding this up. It wasn't, you know, something that I've held up, but it's just something that I think would be a nice addition to this document.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve it as presented without the additional descriptions. Does anyone?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Well, I, do you want to make that motion or do you want me to, because I said?
I'll make the motion. We approve the handbook for appointed officials and elected officials.
Okay.
With, with.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm fine. I'm just listening. Okay.
I, I don't know. I don't know if the updated document includes select board, but it should.
Okay.
Yeah. So that should change. So that's my motion.
Okay. I'm going to step down in second. As for conversation, I just want to, I just want to get it done. And as we're going to be diving into the budget, we're going to have the meetings, the seventh, the eighth and ninth. We have a lot of work coming up. Lorraine, I think it's a good idea to explain a few things, but, you know, maybe we can do an edit to this. Maybe we can revisit it down the road and do something like that. But I just really want to finish, finish everything. So. Okay.
I am, I'm not voting to support a docu, a final document that I don't have in front of me. So until I see a final version of it, I'm not, I don't know how we can vote on it.
Well, it was just the document with the change from selectmen to select board. That was it. Right? Ari, it hasn't been changed since then, right?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So. So I think.
Just like I said, I don't have any objection on, on page 30, the source of information to add that the, the descriptions of the boards and committees are on the town website. I don't have a problem doing that. But I don't think we should go and hold up this document while we make all those changes. I just don't think it's necessary. Especially this, this is for appointed and elected officials after they're appointed, after they're elected. So.
Okay. How did, how did you word the motion, Rich? I just want to write it down.
Well, do we want to include that? Well, do we wanna include that as the source of information?
Well, that's what I'm asking, because now we have a motion and a second, and I just wanna make sure we're approving the right thing.
Okay, does anybody want to do that or not? I wanna approve the document the way it is.
Well, um the way it is would be without a bullet item saying you can get more information on the website.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
That's my motion.
Without that bullet.
Correct.
Okay. Do we wanna add the bullet, I guess, is the question?
That's what I'm asking.
Right, so if we do, I think we should, so then we need to amend the motion.
Okay. I'll amend the motion to add on uh page thirty, sources of information. A description of the committee, the board or committee is available on the town's website uh under Board and Committee.
Okay. So I will step down and second the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
The camera, I.
Fabian, I.
Carboni, I.
Okay, um, so now we're back to the motion with the motion to approve with the amendment, with that piece written in, and the Select Board change, because nothing else has changed in the document. So um, other than.
Is there other changes that we don't know about?
No, I asked Ari, he said nothing else has been changed.
Is there any other changes?
I I I have none, no. I I don't, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, if I'm wrong, I will bring this back next meetings to correct it, but I don't think I am. And I think the document hasn't changed since then, so, okay. All those in favor of approving the handbook, the committee, Board Committee and Commission Handbook with that amendment? Fabian, I.
The camera, I.
Carboni, I.
Okay, let me just make sure we got that. I know Tracy will watch, but okay. Um, I will just, as we're still under old business, Ari, I think that's pretty much all the table items that we had. I think we've both gone through, um, if we come up, if I find anything else, or you do, we can let each other know. Um, all right, so do we have any other old business? Ari, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Rich?
Um, I'll sit down, Chair.
Uh, Lorraine, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Agenda Item Number Twelve, any other business that can properly come before the board? I have none.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, um, well, if that's the case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, thank you.